So, dear gentlemen, the regular board meeting. President and Board of Trustees, Mr. Burnham, Cook County, North, today is January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. This time I will ask the Board to call the board.
Trustee Kath?
I'm here.
Trustee Hodges?
Here.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
Formless President, could you stand for President Leach? And could you lead us, Trustee Richardson?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there are any approvals, I should say, are there any corrections to the minutes for the board meeting that was held on January tenth of twenty twenty-three? If there are any corrections to be made to the minutes? There are no corrections to be made, I would like for a request of a motion to be made to approve the minutes for January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
So, that's a motion to approve by Trustee Claybrook to approve the minutes for January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Can we have a second?
Exactly.
Second by Trustee Greer. About that, can we cut call?
Trustee Kath?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
The minute passed. Thank you for that. Before we open the meeting to the public, if you have anything to say to the board, if you will stand up and give your name, your reason for addressing the board, please limit your comments to three minutes, three minutes, you know, if we don't go over too too much time, you know, to get everything working a lot of the time. I would like for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
A motion to open the meeting to the public.
That's a motion to approve by Trustee Hodges, because we have a second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Richardson or by Trustee Claybrook.
Trustee Kath?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, meeting is now open for comment. Will you stand up and give your name?
Jaclyn McCosby. I live on a hundred. Oh, excuse me. Hundred forty-first and Benzley is dogs on the block and they going in people's yard using the bathroom, the dog's yard, and the guy was walking the dog and I asked him, I said, "Why are you letting your dog mess in everybody's yard on the block?" I said, "You don't even have a bag to get it up and put it in the bag." He told me I didn't own the block, so I left it alone because I didn't want no trouble.
Okay, so, I will speak to you later about that.
Okay.
Do you know where he lived?
Yeah.
Are there any other public comments?
Steve Gregory, I was wondering what is going on with that property that's along the river there, because I saw the stakes in the ground with the pink ties on them. I just had, was wondering about that. And then I just had a statement. We just put a Ring camera on the garage and I think it's kind of neat because you can go online and they have comments that they make. And so, it's, you can learn a lot of stuff about what's going on in the neighborhood with that. And like down the street, not too far from you, there's a car stolen on Sunday night on Green Bay, Green Bay Road. I go Kia, but that was just a couple, couple of days ago. But it's, it's just kind of interesting the way that, that's on that Ring, that Ring thing, yeah. I don't really like it personally, I don't like the surveillance stuff, but my wife...
Okay. You have to be careful with that because it's an invasion of people's privacy. You have to make sure it only shows what's on your property and not others'.
Well, that's pretty much impossible, actually, yeah.
What is public is public.
I understand it, but, yeah, yeah, so. And then al- also, I think a lot of that stuff can be downloaded by the government.
Because when you, when you put the Ring camera?
Yeah.
You do, you do sign, you don't know it, but you will have, they actually have access to that.
Right.
And there's actually been cases where the government actually, when they go access your Ring, like your phone, you don't have your, your little phone?
Yeah.
They can access your phone federally.
Yeah.
They do have the Ring, so be, other than, be careful.
Well, no, personally, I don't like it. I'm just saying, you know, somebody that's more, somebody that's more powerful than me wanted to put. But I got the question about the land that was on, on my calendar.
Are there any other public comments? Yes, I'm here.
Since we're on the subject of surveillance, people may not remember this or even know about it, but a lot of people, when they live in a community, there used to be a group of people that would listen to scanners, and scanners are something where you have wavelengths to where you might have three or four from your municipality. And those municipalities-
Sir, just give your name, I'm sorry.
Trustee Hunter. And you have a-
So, she can't give your name properly, then I, then you're not going to be able to speak. Would you give your name for the record?
You're going to deny my-
And would you give your name for the record?
You know my name.
Would you give your name for the record?
My name is Trustee Hunter. Trustee Gerald Hunter.
That's normal.
And you have those-
So, you're out of order, then. So, you're out of order. I mean, please give your name for the record. That's the rule when you-
I just did give you my name.
First of all, you're not a trustee.
Yeah, but that's my pronoun, that is my proper pronoun. Chandler, go ahead, knock me out of the meeting and watch what happens. Of course it is, a pronoun can be anything that I want it to be, of course it can. You're exactly wrong.
Okay, well, the next person?
And you have the wavelengths for-
Sir?
For-
Sir, Mr. Hunter?
Well, what would you like me to say?
Can I just state your name for the record?
Mister Trustee Gerald Hunter.
Well, that's half the name. Uh, go ahead.
And you have the wa- Mike, I would just ask at some time, you said, and you have the community that would listen to the scanner and you were able to tell what's going on in a community. Recently, all communities, and they've done it quietly, and I believe Burnham has done the same, they changed it to digital, to where people in a community have no idea what kind of crime they have in the community because it's now all digital and the digital is controlled through the police force. And they can block you from hearing it anymore, so they've taken those wavelengths, so people don't really know what's going on in their community anymore. And they've taken it away from people, and that's one thing. And one other thing is, I noticed, when I was listening, when I heard that Mister Hodges was going to be commissioner or voted in as commissioner, I just did a simple Google search on what does a commissioner do, and immediately, when I did that, I noticed that on Burnham's ordinances, if you could let me read it, for the qualifications, says that you are not allowed to be a relative of anybody that's within the village as an officer, all the way up to first cousin.
An officer.
Well, a trustee, anybody, would you like me to read it to you if you have it?
No, that's okay. No.
There it is.
No, this is a non-paying position and-
It doesn't matter.
There's no conflict of interest in it. And I have the attorney on the phone, so you can give us his interpretation.
No person shall be appointed a member of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners who is related either by blood or marriage up to the degree of first cousin to any elected official of the village. That is a state statute, and it's also reiterated in our ordinances. And I have to ask myself, why did the attorney allow that? Why did you, Mister Polk, appoint Mister Hodges, bring him all the way here to do that when it's actually against the law? Why would you do that?
Your time is up, depending on your comment. Does anybody else have a comment? Does anybody else have a comment?
Yes, I'm, I better watch it. I'm John Hayduk. What exactly, I didn't think about this till tonight. I've asked a few of the trustees, what exactly does the commissioner do? I don't know, I'm, I'm actually asking. I understand as a president to commissioners, what exactly is the responsibility, whether it be Burnham, wherever else? Secondly, I want to comment on that billboard that's at Torrance and State Street. I have been noticed, I was looking for a way to, to say, if you, a vote for Mister Polk, a vote for one of the four trustees is a vote for Mister Polk. I was looking for a way to say that, and I didn't have to because I saw the, the billboard, the way you put it up there. It's like you guys, I thought the trustees were supposed to be-
And first of all, we're not here to talk politics.
I'm not politicking.
We're not here to talk-
I'm making my statement.
Do you have anything else to say? We're not here to talk-
You're going to come me off after a minute, sir?
And we're not here to talk-
I'm not talking politics, I'm making my statement. I, no, I'm not, no, I'm not. I'm commenting, I'm commenting on the billboard that you put up. It's not my politics, it's yours'.
It's a bill of cap, but you just brought it up. We're not here to talk politics.
Well, you, you put it up-
Please go to the next highest, we're not here to talk politics.
I'm simply saying, as God, God works, God works in mysterious ways. I didn't have to think about it. You actually showed, I thought I was going to have to fight you about that, to link you guys, you linked your guys' selves.
I have a problem, I have a little problem with my people.
People, people have asked me, is Polk running?
Your people, they should be independent.
Based on-
Everybody, my people, including you, you know.
No, there's no way you're going to shut me up after three minutes because you've already-
I want you to go ahead and get-
You've already taken up a few minutes of my time here, Mister Polk, I'm trying to be fair.
That question is not relevant.
It's not a question, it's a statement.
Then it's re-
I better not be shut up now.
How illegal.
Be fair to me now.
But that is a political statement.
It's not a political statement.
Please go ahead.
Okay. People ask me, though, are you running based on the fact of how big that picture was of yours? I was surprised. I says, no-
You're not talking politics, you're still talking-
I says, it does say something about, it does say something about who the trustees are working for, you or us.
You're still talking politics.
Last thing I'll say, this definitely isn't politics, but one of the trustees will appreciate it. You like to see you have my word on it? Well, this is just one example that I could bring up of several, but you won't talk to us in the meeting, so just one sample. You remember the two dumpsters that you provided for the trailer park like a year and a half ago? You told us in a meeting that you had, somebody donated them, and you wouldn't tell us who, so I kind of left it at that. Well, a day or two later, one dumpster was still out there, all of a sudden, Trustee Garcia, Trustee Garcia said, "You lied." Allowed me to explain. Trustee Garcia was, was out there after nine o'clock at night, and Carol Dills, the manager at the trailer park, she heard a bunch of loud noise out there. She goes out there with her neighbor, and Trustee Garcia was out there throwing her, throwing her cabinets in there. Carol says, "What are you doing?" She says, "The ma-" "That's out there for us." And Trustee Garcia says, "No, the mayor paid for it. I can put my stuff in there." See, I, this is, this is one-
Apparently, she put it in there.
She put it in there, she said, "You paid for it."
Yeah, and apparently, she put it in there and out of the lab, and that is correct.
What?
Thank you. Are there any other-
No, what'd you say?
Are there any other public comments?
Can you re- I didn't hear-
I have a motion.
Mister Polk, you were, can you-
I already, I already did.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
A motion for, by Trustee Richardson, second please.
I'll second it.
This is why we're running, Mister Polk.
Trustee Kath?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Mayor, could I address the wire mill question? So, Steve, we call that the wire mill, it used to be a wire factory where they would take wire and they would coat it with insulation. The county has money to clean up some contaminated sites, and that's one of the sites the county's considering.
Okay.
So, that's why we had to come up with a survey, we had to identify the exact boundary to the property, and it's up to the county, it'd be no charge to Burnham, it'd be covered by the county if they select it.
Do they, does the county own that property or?
No, we do, the village does. But the county has offered to clean it as part of, you know, one of their brown fields, whatever it's called, so it'd be-
Just to clean up the structure itself?
Contamination, yeah.
If there's any contamination.
John Kath, thank God for that.
It has to be contaminated, right? They used nasty chemicals years ago.
Now, we don't-
And I'm a little bit-
Yeah, but John, he asked that question two meetings ago.
No, I went into the clerk's office and the clerk wanted me to foreword that information. You could have just told me, could have taken the five-
I think you asked of me, actually, I don't think-
I did ask you last meeting I was here, you said you didn't know.
Oh, I didn't, you're right, maybe I didn't. I know now.
But she wanted me to foreword it.
And you're right, I didn't know.
Wonder why we can't get along?
I asked later.
Okay, let's move on.
Can I address anything with the dumpsters? It wasn't my stuff that I was throwing in there. My brother-in-law gets home from work really late, and there was some stuff in the alley on Green Bay and a couple of houses down there, so I asked my brother-in-law to help me with his truck, go and pick up other people's stuff since the dumpster was there. And I called the mayor and I asked him if we could go pick it up and dump it in the dumpster.
And I said, yes, in the dumpster.
Do you own 140 Green Bay?
No, I don't.
You don't?
Your time is up.
I, I did a while ago, but it wasn't my stuff that I picked up from there.
That was said, Carolyn recorded you, that's the only reason why I even know it.
Right, but it wasn't my stuff that I was throwing in there.
It does matter, Mister Polk.
You acted as a garbage man for the village.
It does matter. Nobody was supposed to throw anything, that was for the trailer park.
Southside, if I ever-
You said it was donated.
Who picks it up and throws it in the-
That's none of your business.
It's none of my business who donated, this is Burnham's business. It's not our business, what Burnham does now.
Move on, let's move on.
You misspoke there, Mister Polk.
Okay, the mayor's report. Well, I would like to say, here in the mayor's report, we have the same people coming to every meeting, I mean, they complaining, causing all kinds of problems, and this is very routine.
Shame on me.
What we tell them, what we tell them.
Shame on me.
They're coming with the same stuff. I mean, acting like, I don't know, just, I mean, just ridiculous. But it's not going to accomplish you what you want. It's not going to accomplish you what you want.
You mean answers, answers?
I know you're wrong.
I just asked questions.
You're wrong, you bring in all kinds of stuff, and we've answered your questions and over and over and over again, and everyone here is a witness to that, and you continue to involve yourself in the same calamities.
The Lord is watching, Mister Polk.
I would like to say that we're working to advance Burnham's efforts, and we got people that, that are damaging village's property, so eventually, they're going to catch you, they're going to catch you. And when we do, then you'll be there with a court on it. If you're not damaging the village's property, then I'm not talking to you. If you are damaging the village's property, you're affiliated with it, then I'm talking to you. So, again, with the snow coming, we're asking if people would, you know, help us to get the cars off the street that are operational, you know, so we can access and curb the traffic as much as possible. And we also ask for people not to use rock salt on the sidewalks, if it does damage to the sidewalk. And if you have to use it, then please sweep it off as soon as you can, as soon as it gets a job.
You got a bucket of rock salt right in the vest of your ear. And in all the community-
And with that being said, with that being said, that's all I have in the day of report. Your time is up, sir, your time is up.
All right.
Your time is up.
Bucket of rock salt right there. And you're asking the residents not to use rock salt.
Your time is up. Okay.
Shut up and obey.
I mean, the clerk doesn't have anything. We will, we will, we will table the issue there, and we will speak to the attorney about that and get us some clarification of it.
Well, you know.
And so, we will-
I saw you message, and- Sorry, Chris, you shouldn't have reported.
I know we're going to pay the board instead of all of them. Well, I'll have a motion to table item number one and item number two, under, on the public health, safety, and welfare, for Trustee Greer, he will make a motion to table both of those together, for the Police and Fire Commission, as well as the, as for the private private recruit.
I make a motion to table number one for the Police and Fire Commissioners, and also for the candidate for the village of Burnham Fire Department.
I'll second it.
Trustee Kath?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, do you have anything else, Trustee Greer?
Yes, I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Doctor Arnold McKean's celebration was held at South Suburban College on Monday, January sixteenth, to honor the King's legacy. The theme for the evening was restoration of unity and peace. The civil rights leader is still making an impact on the world today. The dream of Doctor Keen was his assassination fifty-five years ago, but it is alive in our daily action. So, the celebration was not just a reminder, but for all to continue the peace world. This event was in partnership with South Suburban College and Georgetown High School, District two oh five. It was a very rewarding evening, and then we say, Marjorie, Dr. Marley, CPRA training classes. CPRA, as you know, is when the heart suddenly stops beating, beating, causing a person to collapse and stop breathing. Four out of five cases happen at home, which means the life you potentially save with CPRA training is more likely to be a loved one or someone that you know. If you're interested in taking a free CPRA class, good training will be, will be provided by the Burnham Fire Department, please leave your name at the reception desk. Myself are a person on my committee, the Health, Welfare, and Education, will reach out to you with more information. And that committee is myself, Trustee Richardson, and Trustee Hodges. Grandparents' Day, March the fifth, twenty twenty-three. Every day is grandparents' day because grandparents made such an important part in the lives of, of, of the children. They provide acceptance, they provide love, patience, stability, wisdom, and support to their grandchildren. So, we would like to honor our grandparents on March the fifth, twenty twenty-three, from three P M. to seven P M. at the Community Center. Again, it's a special day to honor our grandparents with a dinner and a special guest speaker. So, if you're interested in coming, please leave your name and how many you would like to, will be in attendance with the reception desk. Again, that's March the fifth, twenty twenty-three. And as you know, we mentioned before, and we have a dedication for our new multi-pass with, path walkway. It will be forthcoming soon. And as you know, walking can strengthen your heart, it can reduce heart issues, lower your blood pressure, and it can improve your balance and coordination. So, that walking path will be very, very important, and we look forward to it coming. Five things you need to do after a car crash. Call police and wait for the police to come. Take plenty of pictures of the scene and injury. Look for witnesses and cameras. Go to the hospital if you're interested, and if you need to call a lawyer. For those who ride the train down South, National Train Trains will improve the rail service by adding more trains within the next two months in the South Main area. Girl scout cookies will be available soon. Don't forget to support our girls, that's it. For those who like to auto show, the auto show will be February eleventh through the twentieth at McHoney's. It is one of the largest shows in the nation. For those who love Pacillo, Pacillos will no longer be accepting money through the drive-through, you, because they've been robbed. So, there, you have to, you cannot pay cash through the drive-through. As you know, tax season begins today. I R A urges taxpayers to gather all information before filing, and they ask that you file early. If you might need an extension, a extension will be until October the sixteenth. If you make seventy-three thousand or less in twenty twenty-two, you are eligible for I R A's free file program. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Greer, for your report and your information. I forgot to mention that, that when we have these meetings, of course, we're always restricted by time, so we ask the people to govern themselves accordingly, and to only speak for three minutes, you know, so we don't have to keep repeating the same thing. So, once the three minutes are up, then, there is your time is up, there is your time is up on the three minutes. So, if we could do that going forward, it'd be very much appreciated, and if we can lead the order respectable, you know, as we should, though sometimes it could cause people to, I mean, to overact a little bit. So, if we can govern ourselves accordingly, that'd much appreciate it. Deputy and Sayet, we have a community meeting on Saturday from two to four at the Community Center. Two to four Saturday at the Community Center. Public Works can build a trusty place.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works has been out patching alleys and filling potholes to the best of their ability. Also, they've been doing a general cleaning throughout the village, and forecast has snow coming this week, so all the trucks are serviced and ready to go. Also, I have a highway construction careers training program. The highway construction careers training program has been implemented to increase the number of minorities, women, and disadvantaged individuals working on I dot highway construction projects. The training consists of an intensive twelve-week free program to learn the skills necessary for acceptance into the highway construction trades, and gives an opportunity, opportunity for a career with highways potential. The spring orientation testing dates are from January thirty-first through February second, twenty twenty-three, and the spring start date is February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Career opportunities include ironworker, electrician, pipe fitter, carpenter, laborer, and operating engineer. It's through South Suburban College, but it's not on the, not at the main campus. It's South Suburban College Highway Construction Careers Training Program, one sixty-three thirty-three, South Kilborn Avenue, Oak Forest, Illinois, six zero four five two. And if interested, you can contact Rebecca Garcia at seven zero eight two two five six zero zero four, or email her at rgarcia@ssc.edu. And again, that's at South Suburban College at one sixty-three thirty-three, South Kilborn and Oak Forest, Illinois. And I have a few more if anyone wants to take a flyer. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Claybrook, for that report and your information. Order and resolution, and finally, Trustee Garcia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Trustee Garcia, and finally, Trustee Kath?
Good evening. I have this one item that blinking light at the entrance to the golf course was repaired today, finally. I think they had trouble getting the ball, so our vendor was taking care of it. Every time I looked out my kitchen window, I would see it blinking, so I'm glad it's fixed.
Good thing you don't have epilepsy.
Maybe I do, but that's all I have, thank you.
Change of weight, John?
We have some contract, just a light bulb.
Let's move on, project tells you, Trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
You don't have to spend money to save money. Improve the energy efficiency of your home to help lower your energy bills. Commonwealth Edison is offering a free home energy savings assessment.
A professional trained energy advisor will review your home to discover new ways to reduce your energy use. You'll receive a personalized report with recommendations to reduce your energy use. If you're interested, you can call this number to schedule your home energy savings assessment. The number is eight five five four three three twenty-seven hundred. That's eight five five four three three twenty-seven hundred. Also, last Saturday, we had our monthly, uh, COVID vaccination clinic here at the village hall. We had eighteen vaccinations that were done. And they also had the hundred dollar gift cards. We never know if they're gonna have them. But when they do, they give them out until they're gone. So our next COVID clinic will be February eighteenth here at the village hall from twelve to four, if you need any of your COVID shots. And they're also giving the flu shot. You can come here on February eighteenth.
Trustee Richardson, for that report and your information, thank you again. Part of recreation, Trustee Hodges?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, again, like, uh, Trustee Greer, see, I'm so excited for the walking path. It's gonna be really cool. I'm excited about that. That's gonna be a really great project to work on.
And everyone is welcome to come and walk.
Yes, yes. We want to make sure that's taken good care of. Also, February thirteenth, I have another open gym. Uh, anybody wanna come out and play some basketball, hang out, go out and play. I'm trying to get the volleyball together that day. Um, it's for Lincoln birthday, so it's be in the morning. So a lot of kids off school that day, so from ten to twelve, you wanna come out, it's gonna be a sandwich. Cause that's a free, um, it's, it's free for us on that day. And later on that day, they have open, open gym for people who wanna come and hang out with a sandwich. And they should be almost finished with, uh, the gym part. Uh, I mean, with like the, they're gonna have a fitness, um, part of the gym of sandwich. That's gonna be a six hundred, um, so it's open from ten to twelve. But in ten to twelve, we'll be Burnham's, only Burnham. I put this, I set that up for Burnham before it's come by. Try to do it every month to make sure the kids got stuff to do, got things to, to keep us going. Also, uh, we're doing, uh, uh, low impact aerobics day for some of our seniors. I'm so excited about that. March twenty-fifth from nine to eleven. It's gonna be at the community center, um, Saturday. So if you know somebody who wants to do some low impact aerobics, it's a really, really great thing for seniors to do. Uh, so I wanna make sure everyone's moving, even if you just wanna sit down, do a move. And we led by our own trustee, Brandon Greer. I'm excited about that. Also, uh, if you know anybody who wants to do any type of classes, uh, if they want to help lead aerobics, want to volunteer to help lead aerobic classes for the people of Burnham, I'm excited about that. They come back and set up a classroom. If it be, even if it's quilting, if you have a gift that you want to give back to Burnham, let me know and we can maybe see what we can do about that. All right? That's all I got.
Thank you, Trustee Hodges, for your report and your information. You have any presentation or petitions? You have any communication or words of responsibility? We have any unfinished business? I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, mayor, I have one quick thing. Over the weekend again, the same individual that's been doing the donuts on Burnham Avenue was out. I, I think, I'm not sure. It was after ten o'clock, but I don't remember if it was Friday or Saturday. But it did sound like he hit something and I checked the skid marks. So he didn't hit the curb, so hopefully he had some engine trouble. But there was a real lot of bank after he was going. You could see the marks in the pavement again. He was just going round and round and round. It's the same silver car that we've almost caught once before. So he, hopefully it was his engine that blew, but it was a lot of bank. There was no other cars in the accident and he did drive away. But it was after ten, but I don't remember if it was Friday or Saturday. I was already in bed, by the way. Lonnie told me.
Does that person live in the neighborhood?
Nobody visits. I don't know. He, he visits in the neighborhood.
We don't know what house he lives in.
Across your alley, that's where he visits.
Yeah. They chased him once before and he was in the car, so hopefully he'd get, hopefully blew up the motor.
I paid attention, my brother.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn immediately.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll have my Trustee Claybrook for a second.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.